Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session on this May 2nd. Happy May Day, day late. Anyway, tonight's study session is on the youth. Actually, it's on the Casa Grande Alliance. So I think I saw a couple of key players here from the Casa Grande Alliance. Mr. Rains, you going to introduce it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you may recall that likely a month ago, Councilmember Lavender outlined a survey that was being conducted with our local youth by the Casa Grande Alliance in partnership with some individuals. And I'd like him to introduce those individuals and they can pick up from the PowerPoint. I do want to let everyone know that we are Zooming this meeting for a participant, and I'm sure they'll introduce her as we move forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rains. You know, as people are well aware, the pandemic has had an impact on our children, students. And so a couple of weeks ago, I sat in on a presentation the Alliance did where they surveyed 1,500 high school students. And the evidence of the trauma that a lot of our students have experienced was very evident in this survey. And we have two guests tonight. One is Dr. Shereen Hannigan Martinez, who's a professor at the University of Kentucky, who's one of the leading experts in childhood trauma and helping students work through it. And then we have Roberto Rivera. Somebody sent me a TED Talk that Roberto did a couple of years ago, and it was very interesting. So through Joe Martinez, I was able to reach out to him and start a partnership with Dr. Martinez. And Roberto, who is a doctoral student, who also worked in the Chicago school system in turning around their lowest performing middle school into a high performing school, but he runs a nonprofit now. And so Roberto flew in this morning from Madison, Wisconsin. And so we're excited that he is here today. He's going to be working with some of our El Lago students tomorrow as well. And then Dr. Martinez wasn't able to join us in person, but she is on Zoom. Bob Shogren has done an exceptional job as our executive director. Both Don and I serve on the board, and it's a pleasure to watch and work with him and all that he does. He does. He is always looking for ways to support our youth in this community and be more proactive in how do we stop students from taking drugs even to begin with and getting a positive self-esteem in them. So Bob is here tonight, and he will introduce the presentation. And we have some phenomenal students here to speak as well, who are leading this effort. So Bob, welcome.
Thanks, Jeff. Members of the city council and staff, thanks for allowing us to speak this evening on the Youth Wellness Survey that we did with high school students this year. Just kind of, just here's our agenda for this evening. We have, I want to talk a little bit about the evolution of the Casa Grande Youth Alliance. We're going to hear from Dr. Shereem Hannigan Martinez from the University of Kentucky on kind of the trends in youth mental health today. Then Roberto Rivera is going to talk a little bit about thriving research and the elements that kids really need to thrive. And it's like, it's so critical, it's so important. And then we'll, we'll hear about the results of the Youth Wellness Survey. And, and we have three of our Youth Alliance members today. And Valia Calautis? Yeah, sorry. Sorry.
Bob, I never got it right either, and she made the honor of every time that tortured me.
So she, she, she gave me the American pronunciation, and I still butchered it. So I apologize, Valia. Valia is a junior at Casa Grande Union. We also have Caitlin Richter, and Caitlin is a junior at Mission Heights. And then last but not least, we have Nick Isles, and Nick is a freshman at Casa Grande Union. So historically, the Casa Grande Alliance has been affiliated with Students Against Destructive Decisions and has really kind of worked in partnership with the high schools to, you know, really kind of focus on that destructive decision piece and anti-drug and all of that kind of thing. And from my time with my previous employer, you know, I really learned that, you know, the field is changing a great deal in terms of, you know, what's going on at the federal level and what's going on at the state level. And another hat I wear in the state is I'm the vice chair of the Arizona Adverse Childhood Experiences Consortium. And, you know, I think it's now more widely recognized and accepted that, that adversity that people experience when they're kids, childhood trauma, really can have a lasting impact across a lifetime. And I think Shereem will talk a little bit more about that. So we've really kind of reframed the Casa Grande Youth Alliance to be, you know, we're still using the SAMSA Strategic Prevention Framework, which is really all about posing a research question, putting together a way to conduct research, and then, and then really through a youth-led participatory action research, we've developed the surveys and the youth have been leading the, with the analysis of the surveys and that kind of thing. So, so it's really been kind of a interesting project in the last two years to start in the context of the pandemic. So we've been, we currently have about 80 members of the Youth Alliance across six different schools, three middle schools and three high schools. And we have chapters in each school. And kind of the, the, the hope is that eventually we'll be able to use this data to drive the kind of projects we do that matter most to youth. So that's really kind of the intention behind the Casa Grande Youth Alliance. Last year, at the beginning of the pandemic, the kids put together a survey that we did with about 600 high school kids. And, and at that time, at the beginning of the pandemic, spirits were still high. And kids were very optimistic, and they were following the CDC guidelines, and they were, they were very patient with teachers and with kind of the learning process from, you know, at-home learning or distance learning. And, and generally, I think their experience was positive, and they were really giving everybody the benefit of the doubt. And I, you know, when you think about a year and a half ago, everybody was just scrambling, you know? And, and I think the kids saw that, they recognized that, and they were really good with it. With this survey, we basically combined a survey that Roberto brought to the table that he claimed that he called the Youth Wellness Survey. And we kind of combined elements of the survey that we did in 2020, pre-pandemic or early pandemic, and, and kind of created a hybrid survey that we then sent to Dr. Battle at the high school district, who then had a whole bunch of ideas that we included, mostly around social media. So she had input on it, she blessed it. We had high school kids at all three of our high schools participate, not quite the numbers I was looking for, but still very, very strong response. And we did, we broke the survey into three different parts: culture, confidence, mental health, and social media; supported people in community; and stressors, substances, and school. So tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to toss the, toss the baton over to Dr. Hannigan Martinez to talk a little bit about kind of what she's seeing at a more global level, at the national level, and what the implications are of that. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the thriving research, and then the kids will present the, the data from the survey. So are you ready? Ready?
Are you talking?
So, Shereem, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Wenaz Motus, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to be here. I'm sorry that I could not be there in person, but I'm very glad that I was able to join you all virtually. So I've been studying trauma and healing, particularly within the context of K through 12 classrooms for the last 15 years. And I want to start off with sharing a little bit of data with you all. Because what the data tells us is that more than 50% of young people across the country have experienced a traumatic stressor, and that 35% of them have experienced more than one. And what's interesting for me about this data is that while being already grotesquely high, it is data that existed before the pandemic, which we know uprooted the lives of children across the country, right? That over 150,000 children have lost parents and caregivers, that their lives were disrupted in terms of schooling, that they were bearing witness to so much national unrest and instability. And so while this data is alarmingly high, what we know is that if we were to be able to acquire this data now, the, the rate of trauma in, in children have actually catapulted. And when we're talking about what that means, we're using this definition, right? That trauma is when a person experiences, witnesses, or is confronted with an event or events that cause them to feel fear, helplessness, or horror. So again, thinking about the last two years and the level of instability that children have had to navigate, right? So many feelings around fear, around helplessness, around horror. And the reason it's important to understand trauma is that when trauma is unmetabolized, when it is undelved with, when we don't have the resources to help us make sense of it, that trauma gets what they call embedded in our bodies, in our behaviors, in our DNA, and becomes things like post-traumatic stress disorder, complex post-traumatic stress disorder. And this starts to manifest emotionally, cognitively, behaviorally, physically, right? It can lead to things like feeling profound anger and hopelessness, worry, nightmares and reliving, aggression, refusal to go to school, insomnia and hyperarrestal, which often get confused with ADD and ADHD inside of schools. And right now, the work that I'm doing across the country, I hear so many teachers struggling with what folks would call classroom management. But really what they're struggling with is all these behaviors that young people are engaging in as the result to traumas they haven't had the space and resource to metabolize, to make sense of. And so what's really clear for me too, though, in the trauma research, is that trauma doesn't have to get embedded, right? All of us, at some point in our lives, are going to experience things that cause us to feel things like fear or helplessness or horror, right? We're all going to experience something that causes us to feel too much, too fast. But the number one determinant of whether trauma becomes embedded, becomes stuck in our bodies, is actually our access to healthy relationships. The more healthy relationships a child has in particular, the more likely they are to not just recover and thrive from trauma, but to develop protective barriers so that that trauma doesn't become what they call post-traumatic, right? Doesn't become embedded, doesn't. So part of what I think Roberto is going to talk about is what, what can those loving relationships look like? What does it mean to center relationality in our classrooms, in our schools, in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all children, particularly young people who are the most vulnerable as a result of the traumatic stressors and experiences they've had to navigate, which again, have been alarming over the last two years? So I'll go ahead and pass it back to Roberto so he can talk to you all through some of that.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Shereem Hannigan Martinez. Again, my name is Roberto Rivera, and it's wonderful to be with you all today. I'm glad I traveled 1,700-plus miles to be with these remarkable young leaders behind me. So again, Roberto Rivera, I am the executive director of an organization called the Alliance for the Seventh Generation. We call ourselves A7G for short, with the hope and the standard that we can come together and do work that has the possibility of impacting young people 200 years from now in a positive way. So think about that. Seven generations, 200 years. What if some of our conversation, what if some of the strategic ideas that come out of this night can impact young people 200 years from now? All right? The young people behind me asked me to share a quick story before going into the research. And I wanted to just briefly share a story about a close friend of mine named Carlos. And Carlos's story may fit the story of a lot of young people that you know that fall in the cracks of the city or in society in general. When Carlos was in elementary school, he was told he was learning deficient. In middle school, his misdirected entrepreneurship skills got him kicked out. He later ran away from home, got arrested, went through drug rehab, and at the tender age of 14, my friend Carlos tried to take his own life. Anybody know Carlos, or Carlita, or Charlie? A young person suffering, a young person just trying to survive. Fortunately, that's not the end of Carlos's story. Carlos later told me, he said, "Big bro, I realized that I wasn't learning deficient. I was LD, I just learned differently." And when he started to use that learning difference in school, he started to do really well. Eventually, he was the first person in his family to go to college, graduate. And he eventually took that entrepreneurship spirit and directed it in a positive way, where he created his own social enterprise, won some different community awards. And now my friend, who was once told he was LD, is now wrapping up his PhD in education. Now, if we have more time, I'm sure you have some stories. We could break story, maybe over some tortilla after this meeting. But this story is very near and dear to my heart, because it's not just the story of any Carlos, it's the story of Roberto Carlos Rivera. This is my story. And so this has been quite a journey to be with you on May Day, or as you mentioned, the day after May Day here in 2022. And I can tell you that going from being helpless and hopeless to being helpful and hopeful, but you may have to confirm that with my wife, has required me to have some powerful mentors and relationships with adults along this journey. It's required me to develop a healthy cultural identity, to understand that I have passion and things that I'm good at, to realize that, that I had a voice that I could use for good. And I was very fortunate to have mentors that supported me in taking these risks, to the point, when I was 18 or 19 years old, I was a program director of a teen center in my city. And so the research confirms this idea that young people need three specific things in order to go from surviving to thriving. As Dr. Shereem Hannigan Martinez discussed, young people need to have positive developmental relationships with adults, someone other than a parent. As you know, if anyone here ever had a teenager, or maybe a nephew, or a neighbor that had teens, you know, teens aren't always trying to listen to their parents at a certain stage of development. And so other adults can come in with tremendous authority. And so as young people are asking questions about who they are, what their purpose is, and what options they have, adults can come in, mentors can come in, the sacred space, and help to author answers to these very critical questions. In addition to that, young people need to know that they have a spark, something that they're good at, something that they're passionate about. The research coming out of the Search Institute, the world leader in positive youth development, suggests that by and large, the number one passion and spark for youth in the United States is in the arts. And secondly, it's found in athletics. The research is very interesting on sparks, because it also indicates that young people who know their spark and have support fanning this thing into a flame, that they are less depressed, that they do better academically, and that overall their communities see a drop in violence. How many of us would like to see a drop in violence in our communities? Absolutely. So when I get invited into communities that have a lot of violence, one of the first questions I ask is, is there ample opportunity for youth to take positive risk? And if they're into the arts, how are they getting opportunities to, to share their passion in front of other people? To be mentor, to fan the spark into a flame? Thirdly, is young people need to know they have a voice. They need to be authentically engaged so they can have ownership in the places and spaces that they're a part of. All right? And so taken together, when young people have these three things, they do better on every academic, social, emotional, cognitive, behavioral outcome that has been studied. And these researchers conclude that young people who have these three things are more likely to thrive in school, in work, and community life. As Dr. Shereem Hannigan Martinez was laying out so beautifully, we're in a, in a national crisis. Young people are at risk of experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder. What I'm laying out here, and what these young people have embedded into their, into their survey, are the nutrients necessary for our young people to experience post-traumatic growth, an ability to be empowered, to have a clarity of purpose, and have better interpersonal relationships. And so I think it's very important that you all hear these findings and take them seriously, because the research is also clear that when young people have mental health issues and they have adequate support, this can have long-term impacts for the, for the better or for the worse, on the economic impacts of a city, the future occupation and employment opportunities. And again, what we do here tonight, the conversation that begins tonight, I believe can have a positive impact 200 years from now. And that together, we can work in ensuring that a generation, 200 years from now, a generation of Carloses goes from just surviving to thriving. I want to thank you all for being fully present here. And next, I want to introduce my friend, Valia, to share some of the findings. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valia Calautakis, and I helped analyze the positive developmental relationships with adults, other than parents portion of the survey. So originally, as you all know, we, like, we made the survey to like, help the, we wanted to see what Casa Grande needed as a community. We wanted to see how kids were doing in their school, like, mental health-wise, and just what they feel we could add to better the community and to just make it a better place overall. Unfortunately, the results, they came out as a cry for help. We got some positive insight, as well as some negative ones, but it seemed more like a cry for help than anything. It seems like the youth saw an outlet for expression, and they took it, and they let everything out. They let everything out from like, how they felt towards school, how they felt towards the community, and like, the violence, and just their home life, personal problems. They just let everything out into the survey. And I think they're just testing the waters to see where they think we're going to do, what they think we're going to do with the survey results. We already presented to the Casa Grande Union High School School Board with Dr. Battle, and we, tomorrow, we plan on meeting with the union faculty to also, to also present the survey to them and the results. When I had spoken to Dr. Battle today, she had said that she was really glad that the Youth Alliance and Bob and everyone who helped work with us on the survey, she was really grateful that we actually came up and spoke about the survey, because she said it provided a lot of insight on how she, as a superintendent, can actually help better the community and the school and overall the mental health of students. So, and now let's look at the results from the positive developmental relationships with adults other than parents. Two striking points that were, that really stood out to me were that 81% feel that people at school regarding, that people at school struggle with mental health, and then 53% indicate having relationships with positive supportive adults. That means about 47% do not have a positive relationship with, with adults. And then, for example, if someone gets a 50% on a test, they are considered failing. We have over 50% of our youth struggling with mental health, with school, and with personal problems, and so much more that we probably do not even know about. And it, it, that means we as youth are failing. The statistics show that we are failing as youth in whatever societal standards we have set for us. And of course, that's not where we would like to be. I think we need to see this as an opportunity to do more for our youth rather than as a threat. A few direct quotes that stood out to me when I was analyzing the survey were, were these, the following. "We are just trying to pass the American school system without failing. Have you ever noticed how many kids are sleeping in classes? Oh, okay. How many kids are ditching classes? Maybe because you still haven't asked us what we want to learn. I survived the American school system. More classes about them, but not to tell us not to do with drugs, but to show us the effects of them. We students are stubborn, so just telling us not to use drugs only incites us to use them more often." I don't know about you guys, but to me, that clearly, that, they stood out to me so much. It shows that the youth even know, like, my peers, they know that we need help, they just don't know how to properly address it. They don't know how to get the help they need. They feel that they are just pushed into a direction, and they are forced to follow Thank you, and I will now pass it on to Caitlin Richter.
I'm Caitlin, and I helped analyze the cultivating a sense of voice from our youth today. So three-quarters of our, so overwhelming majority of our youth decided that, said that their parents and some people close to them are a good source, that they can talk to and they can feel heard there. But that's not where the problem comes in. Only slightly more than half say that they have the chance to make their voice heard outside of their own home. Although they want opportunities to do so, they see it as you can say anything you want, but you don't necessarily know if the people are actually listening to you or just hearing you. You have no idea, or the student has no idea if, they have no idea if what they're saying is actually going to get real results down the road. So less than a quarter of individuals believe that they have voices, ideas, or straight cries for help that will actually mean something to adults, and have decent results follow them. I mean, 75% of participants think that they will, they can do nothing to help the community. That's a problem that falls because you, they don't know where to go with it. Some direct quotes from the, from people that we got results from is, "I could write a whole essay about why we need to change, but I'm here to tell you to open your eyes because you're still not, you're still not paying attention." Another one, "I think of a small little house with vines that have thorns, but also have flowers every now and then." To me, this shows that the youth in our community today already have a voice. They just don't know what to do with it. They're not given the chances to show people higher up that can actually make a change. They're not given the opportunity to talk to them themselves. If a student can already see that there are flowers in this town every once in a while, that shows they have the dedication and the drive to, to do more. that shows they have the dedication and the drive to, to do more. You have to look past the thorns, which is not often easily done. And a lot of students stop at that point. If they had others, if they had support outside of their family and house, or family and friends, then they would be able to do a lot more, and get a lot more through. The next one is Nick Isles.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our findings. I am going to share on the opportunities to find youth spark and develop youth passions. Some of the results from the survey, we found that 80% report that schools and teachers have high expectations, are encouraging skill improvement, and encourage goal-setting, and positive thoughts about the future. Only 46% do not feel connected to their culture, especially in a city as diverse as Casa Grande. That, I don't know how I feel about that statistic. And 36% feel that learning needs to be more relevant, interactive, creative, exciting, and they would like teachers to be more passionate, personal, and interactive. Some of the quotes that stood out to, to me in the survey during the qualitative analysis are, "Most aren't asked what we love to do or about our interests, and I think if we talked about it more, it would help us feel supported." Another one, "I think Casa Grande is a kind of boring place, because there isn't much to do. There's a lot of restaurants, but not enough places for fun." And this last one, "It's kind of hard for me to make new friends and to show my talents to the world. If there was a talent show or something like that, I'd show my singing talent, but I can't do that, because I'm scared of what people will think. I'm not sure how they will react. I want friends that share the same interests as me." Now, spark may be one of the greatest qualities that we can cultivate in the youth. Being a child, you're given the unique opportunity to spend time finding your passions and your purpose in life. They're in a position where they don't have to work a nine-to-five job, care for a family, or stress about everyday problems and tasks. They have the one thing that they will never again have: time. And many of them are wasting it. Now, I'm nowhere near qualified to be a sociologist, but it doesn't take one to see that rates of depression among teens are skyrocketing. According to PewResearch.org, the total number of teenagers who recently experienced depression increased by 59% between 2007 and 2017. And now, after the pandemic, that number of teens who have experienced depression has doubled, according to JAMA Pediatrics Today. And according to our survey results, over 80% of respondents agree that mental health is a problem within our community. As a member of Gen Z, I can personally tell you the dread we feel after having wasted six hours mindlessly scrolling TikTok and social media, or, or waking up at 2:00 in the afternoon knowing another day was wasted. It wasn't until I found my very first passion in my life, playing music, that I felt my life had any sense of meaning. It was from that that I learned how to delay gratification, to ensure that my future self had success and happiness. And from that, I learned inspiration and how to work hard for what I wanted in life. Viktor Frankl said it best, "When a man cannot find meaning, he numbs himself with pleasure." This same gener, generation of kids, who are depressed and have no sense of purpose, will be the very same ones holding the positions you all now hold today. We come here not to criticize or condemn, or to build our coalition's prestige and success, but to come together and make Casa Grande prosper. And I believe the first step is to give the kids as many opportunities as we can to cultivate their spark. Thank you.
You have a singing voice, just so you know.
We have a few recommendations that we'd like to share, and I want to be all over the. See, this is well orchestrated.
Yeah, okay. So some short-term recommendations that we have all come up with, in hope that they'd actually, you know, work. We hope that, we hope to like make, we hope to have more additional study, because we feel it's needed. Our plan for that was to do focus groups, where we just like, we create more questions, and we target certain groups. We haven't exactly worked out the details of who we'd be targeting, or like, when. We just plan on doing more focus groups throughout all the schools, throughout a variety of teens our age. Another recommendation that we would hope to accomplish would be solidifying the themes and trends and identifying the priorities within all the surveys that we put out. Our final recommendation for short-term would be to share the results of our continued research and progress with not only the city council, but with the school boards, and just with the overall youth.
Back to Caitlin.
So for midterm goals, we want to begin to shift in the approach of working with and supporting youth. We want to design culturally relevant opportunities for youth to self-express their own voice. It doesn't necessarily have to mean verbal. It could be through art, or music, or whatever is their spark. And we partner with arts, or we want to partner with arts, or Art and Humanity Commissions, or any other place that we'd be willing to, so that we youth can show their own voice, in whatever way that that may be.
Some of the long-term solutions may include providing a safe supportive space for diverse teens to be well mentally, emotionally, and, and where they can find support. We also want to provide youth high-driven interest and high-engagement programming that is accessible to all of the youth. Thank you.
So now we're gonna transition to a little Q and A. Sound good?
And I'd, I'd like to wrap up, well, before we do the Q and A, I'd like just to make a quick point. Through my relationship with ACE's consortium at the state level, I've done an awful lot of training to a lot of different groups around the county, around the state, even nationally, on the impact of childhood adversity across a lifetime. And two groups that I presented to in the last several months are the faculties of Union High School and Vista Grande High School. So, so like, you know, all of the teachers at all of the high, both schools have had this training. And, and one of the points I make, and I hope I make well, and I'm not sure I always do, but one of the points I make with them is, I, you know, I think that we have many of the necessary fundamental building blocks already in place for really working powerfully with youth. And what we're talking about really are lots of little things. And it's kind of those little repeated things that we do with youth every day. How we look them in the eye, how we address them as human beings, how we, how we engage with them in groups and as individuals. It really matters most in terms of how we can, you know, catapult this, this, this thing forward in terms of mental health, and voice, and, and, and all of that. So, I really, you know, again, one of the things that we pitched to the high school district is forming a resiliency coordinating council in partnership with the school social workers to really start mapping out how this could start looking different for the high school district. And what we could really do, and how we can, how we can educate the teachers through their pre-service orientation to maybe take a little different approach come, come next year. And I just, I genuinely think that, that by folks really being intentional about how they work with youth, and how they represent youth, I really feel like, you know, there's, there's a change that we can make happen, and really transform this experience that we have for youth in our town.
Bob, me, I wanted to ask you a question, kind of a follow-up question. But understanding that all of us up here have gone through this pandemic, our entire community has gone through the pandemic. We all feel the stresses of the pandemic, from our families to our individual lives and to loved ones we may have lost. And it's, I'm anxious about all of this, okay? I mean, so it's just, it, my, my temperature is going up, you know, because I, I realize. Feel, feel warm?
You're kind of warm.
So, you know, it's, we, we, we hear you, we get it. And so I guess my question is, and I, and I know that this pandemic has not helped, certainly has not helped the mental health of, of anyone, or our entire community, our entire nation. And between mask mandates, and vaccine mandates, and travel mandates, and all the stuff that we've had to endure, it's been hard on everyone. And so, you know, some of the things that caught my attention, you know, is that 81% of the students feel there's some mental issues out there, which I, I know it was there, I know it's there, but never had any clue as to it being that high. So what, I mean, what is your observation? You've dealt with youth for a long time, and, and dealt in this area. What's your observation in terms of the temperature of, of youth? And what's the number one thing that we can do as a community? I mean, the city only has so much we can do. We certainly have, have our youth commission, which we are very active with. We have our Boys and Girls Club, which we're extremely active with, which I know you work with in, in our good decision-making program. I think we could do as a city a better job of communicating with the youth, but I don't know how to do that. I don't even know how to communicate the best with our community. I'm trying to come up with some apps that, that I could send out an alert to let you know that we're having a city council meeting tonight, and that you maybe should show up. You know, or send out an alert that says, "Hey, we had a shooting, and two young women were killed." And it should go out to everyone. So those are the kinds of challenges we're faced with. How do we communicate with people today? How do we communicate with the, the youth? That is, in my mind, the single biggest challenge we have as a city, as to how do we communicate with our citizens? Whether they're youth, or whether they're senior citizens. You know, how do we get the word out, and how do we make sure people have the right information? They have, they have good information. Not hearsay, not, you know, rumors, not, I shouldn't say this, but not CG chat, I'm sorry. So, so that it's, I know I'm gonna get scolded for that one. But it's, it's just important that we really try and figure out what that is. And if you guys can help us do that, thank you. That's all I can say. I've said enough, but anyway. I had a question for you though, Bob. Did you feel any?
Yeah, I think, you know, my, my long experience working with kids in Penal County, almost 40 years now. It feels like, I think there's three things really to focus on. And the first, I think, is about creating opportunities for people to grieve. Creating opportunities for folks to, you know, express what they've lost through the pandemic, and how that's impacted their lives and their families. And I know that a social worker at Vista has shared this story about one student at Vista who's lost 11 fam, family members. Devastating. So, I guess to me, you know, you've gotta find a way to work with that before they can be successful academically. And I think working with that, you know, it's as easy as being a positive, supportive, caring adult. You know, this stuff isn't rocket science, and it's just, it's something that we have to make the time to do. And it's something that we have to, like, you know, as adults, we've got to come together and really start listening differently, and, and responding differently. And, you know, being generous with our time and our attention and those kinds of things, I think, you know, is what matters most. I think the second thing, you know, in addition to opportunities to grieve, I think that we need to provide kids with opportunities to heal. And again, that I feel like that's, you know, self-expression. It could be artistic, it could be musical, it could be, you know, however you want to do it. But it's like, you know, what, what could that look like at a community, community level? And, and how could some initiative be envisioned that could span all grades so that everybody's participating at some level? So I think that, you know, doing something along those lines could be really valuable and really important.
And, but I, but I found that there's a lot of things out there. I just, I also find that there's not a lot of, not everyone knows about everything. And that's the prob, one of the problems is there's, 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 we don't have a good way of getting that message out there. And that's, that is, my, that's my observation, it's just, we, we need more collaborative effort. We need more communication. But how do you do it? And what does it look like? Because everybody communicates and absorbs information differently.
So, I think that's a great question, and I think that gets to my third point. And I think that to really get there, you've gotta authentically ask people. You've gotta talk with them, you've gotta hear them out, and, and hear what the context is for them, and, and hit a broad enough cross-section of the population so that it really truly is representative. And I know that, gosh, your survey is just remarkable results that you get in your survey, but I think there's also an element of this that maybe hasn't been captured yet. I know that we're working with folks at the Health Department to kind of think more globally about how they do their community health needs assessment, and, you know, think differently about some of these like larger pictures. But I just, I really believe that, you know, I feel sometimes like, you know, there's always these opportunities for public input, yet often, we don't hear from public, and we gotta, we gotta, you know, we're on a timeline, we gotta keep moving. And, and I think, like, figuring out a way to slow down a little bit, and really have some conversations. And, you know, if they're not gonna come to you, then find a way to go to them and really start talking. And to me, in that, in that space, you'll really be able to hear what they have to say. Not just adults, or not just kids, but also adults. And, and I think a, a new way to communicate will coalesce out of that kind of activity.
Yeah, Dick?
Yes, I just, the saying that birds of a feather flock together is pretty meaningful. My son was a combat captain in, in Iraq, and saw some really nasty stuff. And when he came out of that, a short ti, well, it wasn't a short time, but later on, he just was losing it. I thought I was gonna lose my son. And he just was completely out of it, and he said, "Dad, every night when I go to sleep, I hear this young girl that was burning up, and we couldn't help her, and I can't go to sleep." And so anyway, he, he scared his parents very badly, and, and himself. And what he finally has found out is that he got in with the combat veterans. They had a different experience than the guys who were driving trucks, or doing other things that need to be done with the military. But there was a guy down in Houston, a captain that took those guys in that had been combat veterans, and really took it out of them. When they came back out, they felt like they understood themselves and other people a whole lot better. And he's, he's got a wonderful job right now, and has been, I'm very proud of him. But I, I do know that, that a lot of times, if you work with people that have the same experience that you're having, it's, it's so much better. It's, it's like when they get together on alcohol. You know, you have different stories around the table. But I, I think that, that as I say, I think birds of a flock, flock together. And, and I think that's really important. And, and at schools, I mean, you have, you have ones- And at schools, I mean, you have ones that get together and would understand and others that probably wouldn't be interested. But the, I think that's a really important element to have in there is some people that do understand, that have experienced the same problems and the same issues that they have, really gel better if you can do that.
Bob, did you have a structured question to answer? Do you want the council to ask you questions? Because that's where we're going.
Keith Baskin, and I kind of want to respond to Dick if I might.
Go ahead.
I think that Dr. Panigan Martinez defined trauma, and to me, I think a simpler definition is kind of life experience that leaves us feeling overwhelmed. You know, whatever that is, and it's different for everybody. And then Roberto talked a little bit about, you know, it's like how we metabolize or how we digest the experiences in our lives and who are the people in our lives that help us to digest those experiences that matter most, that build stronger people, that build stronger kids. And, you know, the research suggests that safe, stable, nurturing, adult relationships change DNA, like change the structure of the body in a way that like, you know, over time, the body heals itself. I mean, it really genuinely does. So, you know, it's just, how do you, how do you frame your thinking in ways where you can really provide those kinds of opportunities for folks and support and validate? And one other thing I wanted to mention is that we're working with Harkins later this month to do a screening of the film Remembering Trauma, to which we hope to invite lots of like, community leaders so we can really have a larger conversation about trauma and what we can do about it at a larger scale.
All right, so, and I want to make sure I'm cognizant of our time. We've got about 10 more minutes. And I don't want to cut you guys short on what you want to tell us, so, versus letting us expound up here, which I've already done, so sorry, everybody. So is there something you need to make sure you communicate to us before that? Otherwise, I'm going to throw it up here and then they're going to use up all of it, I guarantee it. I think we heard some of the asks, but I think it might be helpful after this, if you could maybe recap that and then throw a list of things that you think we as a city could do, that would be helpful for us, then we can kind of chew on that and then get together or get back together and see what, how we might be able to help. Okay? All right, so I didn't want to leave it with you guys not having said everything you wanted to say.
No, I think this opportunity has been extraordinary.
Okay, great. And thank you to, before you all leave, thank you to all of you. You did a great presentation, great information. I applaud the young people especially for getting up and speaking in front of council, that's not easy to do. We kind of do it all the time, but you don't. And so, thank you and well done, okay? That's, I just want to leave you with that. Mr. Levander?
I'd like to do the same thing, saying just congratulations for what you've accomplished and watch that sinking voice when you-
Mr. Levander, go ahead.
Roberto, would you share your experiences with the mayor and the council of how you communicated in Chicago and then the Native American Cultural Center that your organization set up in Albuquerque and how you were able to communicate?
Yeah, for sure. So I was just kind of thinking a little bit about, you know, your story, Mr. Powell, and, you know, just some of the experiences that you had with your son coming back from combat. And, you know, there was a spark of inspiration that I had downtown Chicago in a cafe. I picked up a paper and I began reading about, you know, veterans coming back from Afghanistan and Iraq. And of course, we've all heard the discourse about post-traumatic stress disorder. But this article was talking about this phenomenon of post-traumatic growth and how some veterans were coming back and they were having better relationships than they did before they went to combat. They were coming back with a sense of empowerment and a sense of purpose. And I had never heard that terminology of post-traumatic growth before. And I realized two things, that, you know, in a city where we had 78 people get shot in one weekend, you know, it's a combat zone. Even though a lot of PTSD research takes place with veterans in war-torn countries and so forth, you know, there's some combat, it's a war zone in some of these neighborhoods. But also, some of the experience of post-traumatic growth, I've seen that firsthand, where the youth, they find a safe place, right? They get engaged by adults in culturally relevant ways, you know, to find that spark. You know, one thing that Bob spoke about was the ability to grieve, right? And so, doing some global research on this phenomenon of post-traumatic growth, I found that there's really three things that help create a context for this, right? One is it tends to happen in communities that have a culture of storytelling. This is why adult relationships are really important. And this is why it's important for adults to not default and become old people, but to be intentional about becoming elders, right? And so, in communities where elders are willing to share stories of how their own pain has been flipped into stories of redemption and healing and hope, that lets the younger generation know that this is a phenomenon, this is a possibility in their lives as well, right? Secondly, part of the context of post-traumatic growth is when young people can find new meaning and new insights from their painful experiences. One of the things that does this remarkably is the arts, right? Nick was talking about music. If you think about the blues, right? This has been happening across cultures for generations. You know, you laugh to keep from crying. And now research is saying, one of the highest levels of therapeutic breakthrough is when someone can laugh at something that could have led to their demise, right? And so, creating these spaces for folks to artistically engage these painful experiences and extract new meaning is important. The third thing that helps to really create a context for post-traumatic growth is when people start taking action and start realizing that they're not alone in this, that this trauma, that this grief is experienced collectively. You know, I think for so long, there's been, you know, education folks over here, public health folks over here, youth and community over there. But the problem that we're facing, no one institution can effectively tackle it or metabolize this, right? What's required are for these institutions to start coming together. And I think, you know, with all due respect, you know, politicians aren't going to necessarily be the ones to lead that charge. But what you can do is create the context and help support young people to calling these system leaders to working together. Because everyone in education, everyone in public health says, oh, we're here for the youth, we're here for the families. Well, now we're saying that the youth and the families have some ideas, they have some data, they have some research. And so I think getting some of your support, you know, to really amplify these voices and these calls would be really important. Just briefly, you know, you wanted me to quickly talk about the work in NACA. And so we did, you know, a global scan. And we found that communities that were doing this effectively, were looking and nurturing the well-being of adults and students, you know, seeing how folks are doing mentally, emotionally, physically, spiritually. Getting these community-based organizations to work as an ecosystem to ensure that everyone is covered has really been the key. And again, you know, we've had a lot of conversation. I know there's perhaps some, you know, I don't know, I'm not from here, but some baggage, I dare say. But this notion of a youth arts center, to me, is really huge. That's one thing that we saw across the board in New Zealand and New Mexico and Hawaii, is all these places where young people were healing and thriving, they had a place, particularly for teenagers, right? Where they could engage in the arts and mentorship and really begin to change the narrative for themselves individually and collectively, going from post-traumatic stress to post-traumatic growth.
Just to clarify, we are not politicians? We are elected officials.
That's right, that's right.
So we're nonpartisan, okay? So we're not politicians. You want to see the politicians go up to the state capitol?
Yep, yep.
Matt, go ahead.
So thank you for the opportunity to-
I just want to say thanks. And Bob, he truly has been working with youth in Pinal County for a long time because Mr. Bob was a counselor when I went to student council camp in high school. So thanks for that. But really, it was great for me to hear, I help youth, and like you said, it's not about us telling, it's about us empowering youth to do their thing. And I tell a group that I work with a lot, you guys have to go to the city council, you guys have to go to the school board, because they don't care, they can hear from a thousand parents, teachers, us, but they need to hear it from you. And one of the best things I heard was that arts and athletics, I've been saying that for a long time, is like, I didn't go to school because I liked algebra or English, but you have to keep your grades up to play football or cheer or go to art, you know, to go to your arts class. And I think that's a message that you guys need to keep bringing to the community. And my wife's done a lot of work with art and with kids, so I'm a big believer, big supporter, and I'll plug the Arts and Humanities Commission real quick because they're having a call to artists very soon, it's on the next agenda, to paint utility boxes around town. So if you guys know someone that's interested, it'd be a great opportunity.
It's open to anyone.
It's open to anybody. So yay for the arts, good work, you guys. It is hard to talk, but it was great to hear and keep up the good work. And again, partnering, that's the key. Like you said, partnering with the city, partnering with the, that's the only way we're going to get anything done in this town or the world. So thank you very much. We're limited, so that's all I'll say.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I know we're at our time, so wanted to thank you all. I know everyone up here, all of us appreciate everything you've done. The survey, we could certainly, we would like to have a copy of it, if we don't already have a copy of it. And then again, a list of suggestions, recommendations, and we certainly would, will take them into consideration, okay?
Say one more thing, okay? Just quick, and we do understand, though we're a bit older, it's harder to be someone your age today than it has ever, ever been. So everyone recognizes that and don't think we don't.
But also understand that everyone has gone through a lot of trauma the last couple of years. So it's not self-inflicted just on you guys, it's kind of everywhere. So our homeless population, our general population, so. Anyway, appreciate all your efforts, appreciate the information and presentation tonight. Thank you, everybody, and on behalf of the city council, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.